Okay, welcome everybody to the March 18th work session. It is 4:32. Can I get a privileged agenda, please?
Second.
Second, on favor, huh?
Yes.
Who's gonna lay it out on our water sewer work session? I like it when y'all point at each other.
Thank you.
No, I've got a couple of things I can share.
We just want to know what y'all would do so we can price it.
All right. A couple of things related to the financing piece of everything. I know there was some talk last time about different ways that we could potentially pay for it, and we've had those discussions often all through time. So I reached out to ACCG and asked about, Commissioner Martin, I know, had mentioned, you know, every parcel in the county contributing to the water system. And so I was trying to see if there was a mechanism to accomplish something like that if the board were so inclined. And so I reached out to ACCG. Clint Mueller tells me that he doesn't believe that law allows counties to charge water and sewer fees to parcels that are not on the system. He says that he thinks you could probably levy a property tax through a special district, but he doesn't know of any counties that fund water or sewer that way currently. And then the other thing Tim and I talked a little bit about, and I reached out to him about, was a fire fee. And Tim was aware of a couple of places that use a fire fee, or a portion of a fire fee to go towards the water system. And so they wrote back and said that there's nothing in state law that authorizes or defines what a fire fee is. So it's just a thing that someone came up with, and it is in place in some places. And he says that you have a lot of latitude to customize fees at the local level as long as it doesn't begin to act like a tax. If your fee is challenged in court and is determined to really be a tax, then it would be illegal. There's an argument to be made that fees are voluntary and not required. Someone could elect not to pay the fee and not receive the service. The fire fee is currently under litigation in several counties, and we're watching for more guidance from the courts. So a fire fee may or may not be something that it sounds like it's a little iffy from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, I think it would be iffy because people contribute their taxes, which are paid in the general fund, which currently funds the fire, sheriff's, et cetera protections. And then you almost go down that road, is it a subscription, such as done in some counties in the state where they'll stop at your driveway if your house is burning, and we don't want that here.
So I just wanted to mention those two things. So I guess to say all that to say, I still don't know of a good way to fund, you know, the really large-scale improvements, like a sewer treatment plant and that type of thing. You know, when, I know last time there were some big, you know, fifty million, fifty million dollar numbers thrown around, and that's what we've come to, you know, if you look at doing a sewer treatment plant and connect the neighborhoods and tying together our existing areas and that type of thing, still hard. You can probably borrow a large chunk of that through GFA. The repayment is still a concern, how you generate money to repay that debt is the challenge. So just wanted to kind of throw all that out there.
So more conversation on that, Jason. Is, oh, I'm thinking of just from the money, financial side of it for the investment, or the return on the investment. Are we looking at a veteran return on commercial customers versus residential? Because, and I'm just throwing out, if we're talking about Gray Highway from Bibb County Line or somewhere thereabout to the bypass. And that, what we've deemed as a commercial corridor, and we want to entice people to build in that area. And we know it's a defined length. We know, you know, how much potential we have to add on to it or to tie into it versus, and we still would have to have, assuming the sewer plant and the distribution lines and all that receiving commercial. But building a plant somewhere, just say out off of 57 or 49 or somewhere that we're now reaching out to subdivisions, potential subdivisions, because they're sparsely located. So I don't know that we would have the density to make that work like you would on Gray Highway. So say all that to say, if we did something like a sewer plant on, that would serve Gray Highway and make that a corridor, figure out how to pay for that, see what that payback would look like on a 30-year, whatever, GFA loan. And then look at the potential of customers coming in that to help pay for that, then have that become a way to make some residential sewer. Because I, I mean, I'm just thinking that most people in Jones County that were on the well that now have water, I know for me, when we first got water, I was like, alright, next is sewer, I'm ready for it, you know. It didn't, you didn't have both of them weren't an issue. Water was a bigger issue than being on sewer. I mean, especially when you live, you know, three, four hundred yards from the next house, you know. So just a thought, if we look at two different aspects of it, one, maybe going up Gray Highway, what does that look like? What would it cost to put that sewer in, and what would that payback look like versus, and I know we are also looking at the industrial park, you know, what that would look like. To me, that's a separate issue, because the benefit of that is a countywide response or a countywide benefit from an investment or development in that park. So it's, I mean, tax-wise, that would help us big time, but it's not, we're not getting a benefit for a business or for something except in that park. So just looking at it from two different angles, and I don't know if that's the right way to look at it or not.
Yeah, we could certainly, and Tim may have looked at some of that in years past from a pricing standpoint on what it would cost for that corridor.
And the last thing, can we get like a, maybe a 10-year timeline of water rates when they have increased over the last 10 years? Because I know, you know, nobody wants to talk about it, but if we hadn't done it in the last five years, I mean, everybody should understand, we're not paying the same thing to get the water out of the ground and get it to the people and put the pipes in that we did five years ago. We're paying a lot more.
Do you know how far into, so when, the last time the board talked rates, the resolution laid out rates for maybe five years, do you know how far into that we are? Off the top of your head, I'd have to look.
First one was 2023, we went up from $3.76 per thousand, $4.44. And I believe that stays in effect until 27, and it goes up.
But we restructured the rate, rate structure, too, right?
And then the impact fees, all the tax fees, all that. That goes up every single year.
Okay.
That's gone up three times since I've been here.
Yeah. And so we need to know, that gives us a better view of what our future income and revenue looks like. You know? We ought to be able to count for that when we look at payback.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, like Tim mentioned, if there are things, you know, like, if y'all want us to look at the Gray Highway corridor and a treatment plant, we can, Tim can price that, we can take it to our rate consultant and put all that together, and we've got a financial model that you can build all that into, and at the end of it, it kind of spits out, you know, what your rates would have to be. So we can certainly run those numbers and bring it back to you and let you know what that would look like.
I'd definitely like to see that on Gray Highway, because we've got some industry now that have said, if it comes by here, I'm getting on it.
Oh, yeah.
And so we know we got potential customers in line, and we got, we got property there that could be developed, that I think people would be willing to.
We've talked, and said time and time again, we're gonna have to get them served, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna compete at all, we got to be able to stand there and, well, a plant down there on Gray Highway, which would probably be the best idea, or one out by the industrial park. Way the plumbing is, it can go either way. We could service treatment out there to the industrial park or direct discharge off of Gray Highway.
Just to talk about Gray Highway sewer, and what we've looked at before, you would end up, assuming you have a treatment plant on the south end down by the Kennedy Line, you'd end up with a pump station at Rock Creek and station of gravity there. You'd end up with a pump station at Sand Creek, a station of gravity that would fill with it. You would end up with a little station at Brazos Creek, at Brazos Lake, and then one probably at Barner Creek, that would serve up as far north as the bypass, or a little bit south of bypass. So the unique thing about Gray Highway is you can build as much of it as you want, or as little of it as you want. I mean, the first section would basically run up as far as Lodge Cabin, maybe Princess End, somewhere in there to the top of the hill. The next section would pick up basically Princess End and run all the way to Congrilities.
Excuse me, Tim. Can I take a picture of that? Because, you know, I'm... I'll send it to you guys.
That's probably the largest, Rock Creek Station probably served the most of the largest period. What's really unique about Jones County, if you ran up Waldo Creek, you could serve all the way to the railway tractor unless they downtown break, because all of it drains by gravity to Waldo Creek, every bit of it does. So all you're doing is intercepting the flow, and then you can peel off and go however you want. Barner Creek Station would be in an area that would serve your neighborhood and some of those adjacent neighborhoods down Highway 18. You could pick up a fairly large area there.
So when we're thinking of business and industry, right, where's the optimal places that you foresee?
This was just an idea I sent through a few minutes ago.
Right.
Are you heard it? I was like, ah!
I heard it eight years ago. I mean, we, I think we, I shouldn't say, I remember when, was it, when tractor supply wasn't maybe gonna be in Gray, we thought about putting it in a different place. So are we looking at that initial corridor as soon as you pop into the county?
I mean, you're in the real estate.
Of course.
Wheeler Road. You know, are the wheelers gonna park, some of that property, or nothing?
And we're just over the hill, you got the doctor that's been trying to get houses in there, you know, and...
Well, some of that property, Ellen, that you had no, and some of that property on right that part, I mean, it's not like it needs to work.
Right. So the only way it's gonna be developed was sewer.
Right.
But Wheeler would be the last bit of gravity before you go down. Well, you'd end up all the way down the creek with a lift station.
I mean, we can price them and let you know that's not a problem. But I will forewarn you, I will tell you something. Sewer costs are stupid. I mean, they're stupid. I priced one for a travel center, ten inch line, gravity, it was more than 300 all the foot. I don't know, 300 all the foot.
So does it fluctuate, or are we only getting worse?
It's only getting worse.
Well, then...
So is it the material, or is just, they know they can get it?
I think a lot of it is labor, because, you know, when 2008, probably no, there were probably half a dozen guys I knew that were probably 58, 60, 62. When the bottom fell out, it got bad 2010, that liquidated my home. And then it threw a four million dollar equipment, they went home. And they're not, you know, back in the day, we had John R. Walker, we had Piles, we had Don Hall, we had Tommy Griffin, we had probably three down in Perry. We don't have all them anymore.
Probably two or three.
We've got about four, that's about it. We probably, at one time, we probably had eight or nine in, within an hour here. We just don't have it anymore. So I think a lot of it's just, there's not that many people that can, that can get out there and do it and do it well.
So if it's not changing with the economy, if we're not gonna have a better price a year from now, then we're, we're looking at, you know, either we do it now with it outrageous, or we do it five years from now when it's extra outrageous, and look back like we should do now, five, 10 years ago, and go, man, if we'd have done it then, you know, how much we'd have saved?
In 2008, when things got bad and bubble burst, DOT saw pricing change back to where it was 2011. There were so many projects in the pipeline, it took at least two, two and a half years to work through the backlog to where you had new stuff and people were needing work before you saw pricing come down.
The only difference is, cost of labor almost flat around that time, and now it's astronomical.
Not anymore. I mean, then, an asphalt wrecker on the pavement crew, Davis Bacon wages, were probably $15 for, they're 28 bucks now. You had that guy standing on the side of the road with the rent, 28 bucks an hour.
I think we need to lay the jobs out, lay the dollars out, lay the payback options out, and decide what we're gonna do. Unless, unless we're just not gonna do it, we just need to figure out how long we're gonna go in debt, and the best return on that investment is, because we're not gonna grow Gray Highway, I don't see it growing anymore if we don't have sewer there to bring businesses, you know. We're not gonna grow in the industrial park, unless we have that sewer out there.
And again, we gotta get in the sewer business, because we gotta be able to control our own destiny and not have somebody else, you know.
So, just so we know what to go back and price, so it would be a plant, and then lines of Gray Highway from Wood Street, do y'all want to look at initially, I guess?
Bibb County Line.
Yeah.
Maybe do it in phases, see what the costs are.
Because we got, is that need development?
We've got a lot of stations.
Okay.
We've got eighteen drainage stations that's already broken up that way, so it's just a matter of taking costs, we've got all the line work put together.
Okay.
But we got to break it, we need to take the customers we've got now and get them into that new sewer plant. Meaning, everything off of 49 and River North, you know, it's a given already, we got those customers. I guess that price from River North to Gray Highway, and you're already gonna have a land close from the industrial park, so I think River North is gonna be your biggest chunk.
The problem, the problem you run into is, one, you have infiltration in River North. And so how big, how large do you build it? And two, between the back gate of River North and Gray Road, a lot of undeveloped property right there, a lot. And there's quite a bit up, up at Wheeler Road, just like Gray Highway.
But that might be the impetus for developing.
It's a lot of private individuals that own a lot of that land on Gray Highway, too.
Yeah.
It ain't selling to phone.
Some large tracts have become, become available.
Okay, now that's gonna answer, that's gonna drive the next question. We run from River North to Gray Highway with horse money, end up with a couple of pump stations, get some two, three hundred light hours. I'm not gonna provide them water so they can flush the sewer to come to them, because they don't have it. I mean, I don't, if somebody walked in and said, we got five hundred lots, it's gonna be tough. Basically, it'll drop some. I mean, seriously, it's gonna be tough. As I cut gray off.
All right, gotta do what you got there.
Oh, my God!
Oh, Jesus!
Jake, mate, Jake, right?
Yes, you are.
No, we would, I mean, could we look at a elevated tank somewhere between there and get more? Obviously, we can't cut our brothers in the city off, that's, that would be silly.
Brandon has sent me some numbers, 24. In February, there were four and a half, March, there were eight, April, there were 10, May, there were 10, June, there were 12.7, July, 11, 11.7, August, 14.7, September, there were three, there was, maybe they weren't, September, October, there were 10.9.
So that's...
Sounds like a good gesture.
How much of their, are, how much are we supplying of their water?
About 50% roughly.
It was higher than that.
It's 50 to 60 roughly is what, the numbers that I've seen that they're from Cheyenne.
It's all right.
Right. And that gives another, we gotta have water, we gotta have sewer. Now, only thing I saw was that, in your district with the doubleides, that is, that's only getting worse. Am I correct with the system down there?
Yes.
Yeah.
On 49.
It's only getting worse.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, not only the ones that are on that section, but even more in that area are having trouble. So I look at that as a priority.
Where is that at? Is that down towards the George?
Shelby, that's behind 49 ballpark.
Yeah, 49 ballpark.
Jones Acres.
Jones Crossing.
Jones Crossing.
Yeah, I like it, Jones Crossing. That's been a trouble for quite some time.
Along with Hampton Lake.
And I actually got a call from a realtor when I asked you, what's this, and you said that's the, that's the drain field that just got watered. They said, interesting, somebody wanted to buy it for, put a house on it. Something told me that was what it was, but I didn't know exactly where it was.
Yeah, there's a house on that road that's for sale right now, and somebody asked me, why was it so cheap?
And is that not in any of the 49 phases?
It's not, but it's not far from sewer.
That's a few hundred feet, but it's downhill.
So that's, that's a, I think that's a priority to get them fixed, particularly...
Water sewer?
Water.
Oh, that's what I was asking, the water was on 49.
Yeah, without water, it's just the sewers, you say 200 foot?
It's a few hundred feet, I don't know exactly.
But it's, it's all gravity where it needs to go at that point?
It would, it would have to gravity down the bottom of their cul-de-sac, cut through the woods to our current lift station. You have Coal Drive and Shelby running parallel, both cul-de-sacs at the bottom of the hill. Coal has a lift station over here, Shelby is the neighborhood, that all the subject tanks are failing. So everything would have to flow downhill, either, easiest thing would be connect into the lift station upgrade, this current lift station, and then it pops up, Coal pops up here, so a lift station. It'd be running the sewer gravity lines through the woods and then upgrading to current lift station.
But that is the only ones that are being provided sewer, correct? Is on Shelby.
Yes, and it's just, yes.
And it's only the left-hand side of it, not the right-hand side. Which is probably six, true, six, double lines?
Yeah, currently, there's only two that are connected source of sewer over there. The other ones don't have access to, they're too far away to even offer them access to it at all, that's why they're sitting waiting, what happened to you?
See, Jason, if you take, depending on what cost was, if you take Coal Drive and put the pump station, move that station down the hill, back to your left, kind of, the north is straight up down, down to the southwest, you could pick up those other two roads, you could pick up Shelby and the next one.
Menzy.
Somewhere down there, you would be able to pick all that up and then come and buy it.
Well, if you screened them down, the other roads are right there behind it, too. There's, that's the bottom, that's the end of Teresa Circle right there, that Mandy Court. I mean, all of those are right there together. But Teresa goes downhill and then comes back uphill. But Mandy Court would be on that downhill slope, and Elizabeth, too.
And as you and I've said this time and time, I mean, we got to get the sewer business, and we got to have more water, so I think that's two priorities. To me, that's, that's a definite priority to fix a health hazard that's only getting worse.
Absolutely. I mean, I think they presented projects from Sunnydale all the way to the industrial park, and depending on our timing, we may not have wanted to make that expenditure, but now we absolutely do need to do that. And I think you, for the density, you know, you grab as much as you can as you're coming through.
Right.
Because you know you're gonna get your payback, you know, with all of that area, Hampton Lakes, and of course, if you tie in River North, it's a no-brainer.
We got customers.
Yeah, absolutely. Flip the switch.
It's a situation that's gonna start affecting the tax basis, houses become unlivable.
Of course.
You have blighted neighborhoods, the whole neighborhood goes down, so it's essential to get them, to keep them livable.
So yes, put that at the top of the list.
And I've spoken to a resident on Shelby, and with the Health Department, their subject tank is beginning to fail, and they're looking at a minimum of about $15,000 anaerobic subject tank, and a small chance that that would even work. And this lady just bought this house like two years ago, so she's looking at her entire investment.
So, I'm sorry. I think I recall from last time that the board was okay with us maybe fixing the Shelby Drive, Shelby Court Coal Drive situation with some of the excess GFA money that we feel like we'll have from the industrial parks, so we're, I think I recall that from last time, is that everybody?
But that would be a fix that, if we do a bigger project, could tie right into that project.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Jason, do you have a cost, a proximity cost for that, or a cost per parcel that that may affect or help or alleviate the issues we're having?
I don't know, have we...
We have updated numbers. I'll tell you, the basic lift station that will handle that area is going to be about four million dollars.
That's what I was thinking.
And that's no generator on. And then the gravity, I mean, I bet you could drop the lift station and the gravity problems, I hope I bet you drop the lift station right there now.
But that's not a small, that's a small lift station. That's not a big one.
How many potential customers in that area?
So you're just talking about those two roads there, too?
Well, could you hook Sandy Court, gets uphill, and Mady Wells Drive? And Mady Wells Drive? Could you encompass all of that? Because that's all uphill.
Will they sit down, four, five hundred bucks, we're gonna look at it, see?
How fast can we do something to get that process started to alleviate the issue and then, of course, be plugged in for the industrial park?
Zoom.
What do y'all need, Jake?
First?
Keep zooming. Go back to the industrial park. How far away? So that's Grisville Road that's right behind them.
Right. See, in reality, from what I remember, the area, a lot of that area drains down through Grisville. So if you put a station down there and gravity, it would all eventually get to it. The question is, what is the best way to build it down? Build it in two stages where you could take a station out, remove the equipment, and reuse it.
Where is the ideal location we are thinking about for sewage treatment plant on that side?
That's a good question. If you did land application, if you did land application, I'd say the other side of Henderson Road. Because there's some timber property out there. There's eleven, twelve hundred acres timber property out there.
Where have them?
They're split. That probably would be ideal, I guess. If you stayed in the middle, and Gray Highway is almost dead in the middle, there's two, two different sites there, Gray Highway and one at Grand Road that would discharge probably to Walnut Creek, which would probably be... We, we look at permanent limits. BOD being five, solids being five, and phosphorus being one. We probably, I think we could get that at a long-accret discharge. That's what I think. The difference between a five-five, ten-ten, and thirty-thirty is money. Land application's fifty-fifty, fifty, BOD fifty solids. But we're pumping it further. Gray, I mean, Gray Highway is almost dead in the middle between River North and industrial park. It's probably within ten, ten percent either way, thirty thousand feet either way, thirty-five hundred feet either way. But that goes to an advanced treatment. That goes to twenty-five dollars a gallon, a million gallons, we're going to twenty-five million bucks. Maybe, might, because it might at thirty, depending on what they give you on the phosphorus, phosphorus level. The problem we have seen, it doesn't matter if you're in Gwinnett County, and your discharge is close to Lake Huron, or if you're in Cobb County going into Chinooki, or if you're in Jones County going into Walnut Creek, or if you're in Wrightsville going into Hoopy River, then it's a tight. And you're putting out, you're putting out a hose to drink the water quality, water, your wastewater. I can take wastewater out of one of those plants and put it in that bottle. You're only gonna tell it different than what's in that bottle right now. And that, that costs money. Costs about four thousand dollars to operate, maintain.
So we have land application cheaper to treat?
It's cheaper to treat, it's less string, it takes more proper. It's all about the ground ability to cope. Typically, you have more issues with the neighbors, so nobody wants to send them back to you, typically. You have to have somebody that's good dealing with hay, because most likely, you're gonna go grow coastal Bermuda hay. And when you harvest it, you have to remove the hay, because the nitrogen will leach out into the ground, into your groundwater. And you do not want groundwater getting, uh, the nitrogen. That's a problem.
So you can't plant pine trees?
You can plant pine trees, but you have to space them enough, because you're putting, a typical spray is gonna put out forty, forty-five gallons of, uh, forty, forty-five PSI. It'll take the bark off of the pine tree. So you can spray it and let it run onto the pine trees, yes, we can. You can drip it between the pine trees. Just when they harvest them, it tears all that up, and you have to replace it. So you know when you harvest it, you can replace all your drip line.
John Pearl, they, they've worked around, they, uh, they were, if I remember, they were a hundred percent in the timber, John Pearl. I don't know if you familiar with that one, but I worked, I worked all around it. I just remember when they were running it, the adjacent track, it smelled like, you know, it was raw coming to you.
That's a, usually, when you go to a facility, my experience, and you go to a facility and you can smell it, they're not putting enough oxygen in it, and the pH is not right. Because if the pH gets low, it's gonna smell. And if they're not putting enough oxygen in it, it's gonna smell. And when you get both of them, you're gonna have people a mile away calling, knowing what's gonna happen. Because they're gonna smell.
So there's pros and cons on everything.
Right.
So where, um, you were talking about removing it, I mean, just like in the, in the Cass Lane, where I'm getting hay at. They, they have to cut, they literally cut it every, every three to four weeks.
Tim, life of the system, if we did a Gray Highway system discharged in Walnut Creek versus land application off Henderson, what's the life expectancy of one plant versus the other? I'm looking at investment, longevity, life expectancy, et cetera.
That's difficult. Uh, your structures and treatment plant don't make it fifty years, fifty years. The equipment's twenty years. It doesn't matter which side, twenty years.
So if we didn't land application, we would need a twelve hundred acre spray field or twelve hundred acres to include that as part of the buffer?
Well...
Because we need a quarter-mile buffer.
Perks. Two, two inches, two inches per acre per week will generate about fifty-two thousand gallons an acre sprayed. So literally, ten acres, you could spray five hundred, twenty thousand gallons on, in a day. Okay? But you need seven of those, because remember, you're spraying different. If you spray the two, two inches out in a, in a day, you gotta be able to spray seven days and come back to it in a week. The land application, you do grow hay or pine trees. The salt and the wastewater will harden the ground, the soil, almost, almost like it crystallizes it. So whoever has it periodically has to rip it or aerate it to break that crust up and, and make it work.
Right, where it hardens over, doesn't...
Yeah.
What is that, every six months, three months, a year?
Usually, we do it once a year, no, no more than once every two years. But if you go every couple of years, you're gonna be ripping it with a two-foot chisel fly. And you're gonna rip it, maybe on five-foot centers, and you're gonna rip it with a two-foot deep chisel fly, to really break it up and get it. I mean, if you got somebody knows what to do, it's, it's not a problem. But if you get somebody that's lousy with it, it's pain in the butt. But it's probably half the cost.
You get what you pay for. I'm leaning more towards the, um, discharge into a Walnut Creek-type facility.
Now, one other thing we looked at, we, we've had these conversations several times. One other thing we looked at was going to the Long Island River. And going downstream of the Water Authority intake. Because if I'm within ten miles, I have additional testing I have to do, and I have additional checking I have to do automatically, because I'm in, I'm above the intake. And the big, the big word we're looking at now is PFOS and PFO, which are forever chemicals. And we all, we all use the stuff. We have it in our house. Because anything with Scotts card has PFOS and PFO in it. And so, and it has for years. I mean, when did that, three M and PFO make that stuff in forties or fifties? You know, a bag of popcorn that you stick in the microwave, the bag's full of PFOS. It's what holds it together, so when it, when it's cooking and all the oils in there, the bag doesn't separate, because it's a water treatment. I mean, it's just, anything you got water resistance, it's gotta be coats, tubes.
But you can go just below the intake of the Water Authority? And you don't have a distance there, right?
No, it appears, it appears we would be probably several hundred yards from it.
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, it's not too far to the Bibb County line.
It's not.
Down there. But I think I know all the people who live on that property all the way from the reservoir down.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a possibility. But to know we would end up filing a wasteload allocation, go through the process, takes about six months. The advertisement on the internet, it'll be sent out for comment, which they'll assume they'd be sent to make the Water Authority comment. Just to, just to, I mean, there's, there's a myriad of steps that have to be done to get there.
I'm gonna look at the cost difference in that. And, because that would be more piping, but probably less restriction.
Yeah, it, I would expect it to be a higher limit.
Yeah.
It, it may be better off. There's a... An SBR with cloth media filters will get you to a five-five. The real issue that we see through is just the phosphates. You know, the standard is one. Sometimes you say a point five-three, sometimes you say a point one-three. Point one-three is tough. That's what, when that county lost it, we did CPA over going from one to point one-three. They had a hundred and twenty billion gallon per day expense, and when they went to point one-three, they, it cut it to an eighty billion gallon per day expense because of the loading. Well, that was a hundred million dollars. That was a hundred million dollars cut, not off the bat. But, I mean, there, there are a lot of different factors. You're not gonna settle this overnight.
Yeah. So for us, we've got to make some decisions. And we need to just throw the numbers in front of us, and then we gotta do it. We gotta make some decisions, simple as that. I think y'all have everything on here we've talked about the last couple of meetings. So the top line is what we have from everything we've done in the past. GFA loans, uh, grants, internal funding sources, everything. And then, I'm assuming these are, um, what the original projects are, and the right-hand column is what we have remaining in those?
So everything above that top bold line is the, the balances we have left in those various funding sources as of one-thirty. And then the, the numbers below that are the numbers, or the amounts remaining on those projects in progress as of one-thirty.
But we've encumbered all of them, so we've got, this is not gonna take this right-hand column to do these projects, right? We've already...
Right, right.
So this is money we can either use to fund other projects or use for debt service on a bigger project?
I, I think, so the bond money is all, all spoken for except for one point nine million.
Right.
So we got that left.
ARP, GFA, one Georgia's all spoken for.
Mm-hmm.
GFA CW.
So the GFA CW, that's what we were talking about with the Shelby Drive, uh, thing. So, so really, what you've got available now that's unencumbered is just the, the nine forty-one in new construction and the one point one in construction savings. And some of that, we have to hold back for payments on the bonds.
So we just need to update where we decided last time was, how later, while we're talking. So we, we talked about the Shelby Court upgrades?
Shelby, right.
And it's currently unfunded, but we're gonna fund it out of the GFA CW?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's one, two, three down. And then we also talked about, what was the other ones we were gonna do?
We talked some about River North. That's, that's something we've had kind of internal conversation about doing some of the work there. One of those things is the, the lift station back there by the condos. That was one piece of that, and then there was some line work and some work on other, other lift stations there.
I thought we talked about, um, River North using the special tax allocation district to do that.
We, we did as well. So that, that's another option. If, if you didn't want to use CIG for CW money on any of the River North stuff...
Are they fixing to build some more stuff that they're behind there?
Potentially. We, we've had conversations with...
So would that be another, I mean, could that fee help pay for some of that offset, too?
Um, I, I guess if you, if you went through after, that would. There's some challenges with that development, so I, I wouldn't bank on that just yet. But we, we had a meeting about that last week.
Yeah, we're gonna look to see when. Now, I think it's two more years, maybe, that that...
Oh, that the current...
Current runs out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I can go check that real quick and let you know. I don't know if...
That would be a, a good, to re-up that, and it's a, it's a continuation for the residents over there. It's not a one on top of the other.
Right, right.
I think that would be it. I mean, I would hope that, that most of them, and it would take us from talking to the HOA and River North Association to say that we did a twenty-year deal, you agreed to here, put everything in, it's twenty years old, it's time to re-up and renew.
Right.
Otherwise, you can keep having problems, which is problems for them and problems for us.
I think the question you're gonna have to answer when you go over there, is where you're gonna go up on water?
Yeah.
And I mean, I, I think you could, depending on how much of a mill they were willing to go for, you know, you could, you could put together a...
Make that part of...
Yeah, water and sewer project.
And I think it makes sense to do it all, because we're gonna be digging up a lot of stuff, so...
Do it all at one time.
It'd be more palatable in that time.
A one-time fix, I think. There's a lot of residents over there that if not sewer, it's a water problem. And the water is a nightmare for us.
We're still gonna go down the middle of the road, right?
That's right. A little curve on it. Y'all bicyclists better learn how to run on an eight-inch wide, cross hatches on it.
You were, you gonna still sit down and talk with the, the homeowner association?
Yeah, we need to do that when we get, when we get numbers. I want to be able to take something to them and say, "Here's, you know, how long are we talking about doing it? When are we talking about doing it? What does the project look like and what does the timeline look like?" I don't want them thinking we're gonna do this in six months and it's a two and a half, three-year project.
Then, I guess the question is, how far do you go? Do you want to start in the back gate?
And I think that's the, that's, that's the question that needs to be answered, is what, how, is it all the same age? Is it all the same pipe? Is it all the same, uh, in the same shape?
Closer to the river is newer, isn't it?
The section, uh, with Whispering Pines and Shady Greens, that's a newer section. It's, it's C nine hundred, it's, it's new. Yeah. So, yeah, we'd probably start the same thing they have between the Homeowners Association and the River North Association, RNA and the HOA is, you got the older... you got the older section and the newer section.
If we can on some homework, Wendy, just before we run out of time. You talked with, you had a contact with Vulcan?
Yes, I have.
Good?
Yes.
I had one too.
Did you?
Yep.
Was yours good?
Uh, I, mine, uh, I told him not only could he give us an easement, they could, they could probably help us out on some expense. And so, we got people without water that are probably a result of. And, uh, he said he, he would forward it to the powers-to-be. And I said, well, it don't hurt to ask.
Yeah, he said we should be getting the letter for the easement this week. Because that was two weeks ago that he said it. He said it was in Birmingham and they were, had agreed for the easement.
And mine was gonna both talk with him because, uh, he deals, he deals in the country and out of the country on this, this company. And he said that, and I'm straightforward with him, I talked to him yesterday. You know, I ain't gonna, I ain't bashful to ask. And I said, it'd be sweet if y'all helped us out on some of this expense. A lot of it's, uh, we're having to help neighbors out because it's, you know, water on y'all's rock that keeps moving. Don't ask, you don't get, so we got those two homework things.
Tim, these-
Go ahead. Maybe we've got that resolved to when we keep going.
Jumping subjects a little bit, the highlighted on here, Henderson Road, Massville Plant, uh, Grisville Plant upgrades. Is that unfunded? Do we find another? It's highlighted on just, what is that?
So the, the thought, the highlight there was that we'd originally planned to do, I think, pretty substantial work with, with all three of those. Light and tie was not really on the radar when we did the bonds, but it is, is a major need. So, the highlighting, uh, kinda goes along with the, the one-point-nine left at the bottom. And the question there is how do you scatter the, the one-point-nine million over those projects?
Okay. And I think that's a, uh, in my opinion is, we're asking the professionals that do this stuff. I would, I wouldn't want them to ask me, how do I divide that money up? I'd want them to tell me, here's how you ought to divide it up if you want the best money for your buck. Here's where you're gonna get the most production, or here's where we're having the worst maintenance problems with it. Here's where you're gonna lose the least amount of money if you, if you put money towards it. But, you know, recommend to us where we need to spend that because we, I mean, we have it there and that's definitely an unidentified huge need, so.
And, and some of that too is related to, um, where we get additional water from, so, uh-
So which one's the most important to you?
Additional water? And we're working on that, right?
Yep. And we, we'll be. I like the idea of having different areas of source of water rather than all our eggs in one basket. Let's just say that aquifer, something would happen to it. You know, and we got all our eggs in that one aquifer. We can go over maybe another county and get on a separate one, which I guess it's a different to get, uh-
It's all the same, but the more, the more, you know, the crustaceans, also for, uh, uh, aquifer, also called the Tuscaloosa, runs from Augusta to close to Mobile, along the fall line, it's probably about sixty, seventy miles wide. Maybe a hundred. And it's, uh, pretty, pretty, pretty strong. I mean, it's pretty amazing when you look at these aquifers and how most water's pulled out on the daily. And they keep right on lock and load. It's just amazing, really amazing.
Same percent of the world's water, you know? Darn it, it's cool.
So we really won't be putting all our eggs in, you know, I, I was thinking, right?
But I mean, it, it's a, it's a huge area, a lot of recharge to it. And just the further you get away from the P-mine from the fall line, the larger area you have that's drained to it, that's filtered, the more water you can get.
Anything else we need to cover on this? Shelby for sure.
Yeah.
Water's a must.
Yep.
And sewers a hope.
I think sewers a must too.
Oh yeah, I do too, but, you know. All we need is a check. Or a checkbook with a lot of money in it.
I think we get numbers on, on the priority levels and then see what, what kind of money that's gonna cost and then how we, how we can fund it. Is there anything else, anything that y'all need from us, Jason or Tim or?
I don't think right now. Is there anything else?
Something I'd like you to work on with them is some kind of a development group. We, we have seen a few projects in the last two or three years where somebody comes in, I'm building X, Y, Z, X, Y, Z, and then James said, okay, can they go spend eight hundred thousand, then, then help us? Nothing happens. Because the interest rates went up or something happened or somebody every year had financial problems and they pulled out part of the store or whatever, whatever it was. But some kind of, some kind of development group says, we're gonna spend this money, you're gonna spend this money. Your project, obviously, you're gonna reimburse it.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
So you don't get the opportunity for a deposit. Or you can't ask for a deposit.
Just some kind of agreement, you know, on project to project. I'm sure your attorney can pull one side together and that, I mean-
Tim, she just walked in the door already.
Already assigned me work.
Just pull one of them together right quick while you're situated.
Something that gives y'all some kind of taste.
Sure, yeah, I agree. You gotta have, have something to fall back on if they fal- if they falter.
If you had somebody come in and say they got a ton of lots of vision over a highway, I need a pump station and some gravity. And you spent two million bucks getting it there. And they, they need to, we need the customers faithful.
We've got an agreement, both industrial and residential.
And I, I'll take a minute to see what's the difference.
Anything else to think of on this?
Not unless they have something. Yeah, I just need water and money.
All right. Well, we got, y'all ready for Greg?
Yep. Make a motion to adjourn this work session.
Second?
Second, all favorize. Need a motion to, uh-
Make a motion to go into our, uh, second public, um, work session for-
Pre-disaster?
Pre-disaster mitigation plan with Mr. Greg Wildcard Boyke.
We got a second, all favorize?
All right.
Let's have it. Looking at all these millions.
Thanks, sir.
Better done this back in the day, you know, something you'd been, what? Where's your friend? Why didn't you do this with your chief's eye? So they got a lot of money.
Nice. They answered all the money.
I bumped into you, the lady with the long gray.
Are you gonna tell us what you put on this, Greg?
Uh, yes.
Hope you aren't gonna leave it up to us.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Chairman, Commissioners. Happy to be here today to do a public hearing on the pre-disaster mitigation plan and officially get this process kick-started here for Jones County. So we've got a nice slide deck that y'all can see here. So, uh, we'll be, uh, using that sort of as our framework for going through this. And, let's see, I don't have the clicker or control for it, so. Oh, okay. Oh, that'll be even easier. Oh, I can, I can just, I have the power now, okay. Great, all right. So, uh, well, you know, there's our agenda, things we're gonna go over. Um, you know, you all know me at this point, but for any members of the public who do not, my name is Greg Boyke, I'm with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. Uh, and we have been contracted by Jones County uh, to assist with the development of the county's pre-disaster mitigation plan. So today we'll talk about what that plan is, the requirements that go into that plan document, uh, what we are all going to collectively be doing to help make sure that that gets completed. And then, uh, per, uh, you know, usual for a public hearing, we'll have a public comment period at the end before we conclude with an overview of anything, um, that will be coming up in the future. So to start off broadly, what is hazard mitigation planning, pre-disa- pre-disaster mitigation planning? You may hear these terms used somewhat interchangeably. Um, but basically, these are a series of actions that we put together in a document, a plan, um, that are going to help reduce long-term risk to Jones County uh, and help to prevent, uh, adverse impacts to human life and property from various hazards that, you know, may exist, uh, in either the natural or the built environment. And so, some types of recommendations that occasionally will come out of these plans might be, um, helping to, uh, move, elevate, um, you know, fortify homes that are in floodplains. It may be looking at, you know, levees or something at the very large scale. At the small scale, it might be just making sure you have building codes that meet the needs, uh, that the community might have pertaining to disasters. Uh, or it could also be looking at how you do your land use planning to hopefully avoid uh, having development that happens in areas of risk. And then that can get all the way down even to more specific action items like we need a new generator here to help provide resilience for our community uh, in instance of a disaster occurring as well too. So why do we need a disaster mitigation plan? Well, hopefully, this is something that is a useful document for Jones County, um, especially for Karen and her role as the EMA Director, for Jason and his role as County Administrator, and for each of you as the elected leadership for the county. And, and hopefully it does give a good roadmap of some priorities and things that the county wants to accomplish. Hopefully, you know, as a result of this, we can feel like we've got a safer, more resilient community. Uh, we can recover from disasters more quickly. And the, um, statistics that we get from FEMA is that, you know, for every dollar that you invest in mitigation on the front end, uh, whether that's the planning side, whether that is infrastructure hardening, uh, resilient infrastructure that is, you know, not going to fail in the face of disasters, for every dollar you invest in that, you're gonna save four in the long run should the worst case scenario happen, so. Uh, the other reason why we do this is it's required by law.
There's that.
There's that too. You know, I always start with the, with the positives of what hopefully it's going to do and then, yeah, it's also required by law. Um, and specifically, that's the Disaster Regation Act of two thousand. Um, and what that's tied to is a lot of the federal disaster funds. So, um, for example, last fall when Hurricane Helene, uh, came through Georgia, um, there were impacts all throughout Middle Georgia. And while our region was, was spared the worst of those impacts, several of the counties within Middle Georgia were, uh, indicated as federally disaster, it had a federal disaster declaration, which meant that homeowners in those communities were eligible for direct financial assistance for, uh, home repairs, reconstruction. And in many cases for those communities, it also meant that the local government would be directly eligible for funds, uh, whether that was, uh, funding that happened sort of on a formula basis to compensate for time, effort that went into direct cleanup from the disaster, or whether that might apply to future rounds of funding or supplemental disaster recovery funds that then get approved after a natural disaster. Um, so an example of that would be, uh, in some cases after a bad disaster, uh, Congress will appropriate money and that might allow the county to go out and apply for a grant that gets a new water tower, for example. Um, or some new, um, you know, fire protection equipment, for example. Uh, things that help to strengthen the county's overall resources, assets, to help make sure that you can, you know, bounce back quicker from any disasters that happen in the future. For any of those types of funding, you have to have this plan in order to receive that funding. So while we hope that, um, you know, like, like with Hurricane Helene, they continue to pass by Middle Georgia, we know that that's not always going to be the case. Um, this plan accounts for not only hurricanes, but also strong thunderstorms, which, well, we get pretty much everywhere. Uh, counts for tornadoes, which, you know, we were very fortunate not to have more of them, uh, just, just this past weekend. But there were warnings, uh, to the north, southeast and west of us here, it felt like. So, you know, all of those things are, are disasters that we do encounter, uh, on a regular basis. Plan also includes wildfires, uh, strong winds, uh, and also accounts for any man-made or, um, technological disasters that might happen as well too. So our requirement is to have this new plan, uh, submitted to FEMA and approved by January eighteenth of two thousand twenty-six. So what does the plan do? In essence, it starts by identifying what these hazards are. Then it looks at the various risks to the county, to its critical infrastructure, uh, assesses where there might be vulnerabilities in place, and then develops goals, project strategies that are going to help to eliminate or reduce that risk over time. Um, and that gets to those specific mitigation activities that may be eligible for grant funding at some point in the future. So, um, the plan will talk about risk and vulnerability from both natural and technological hazards, uh, which I alluded to a moment ago, as well as the goals, objectives, action steps for all of those. So what are we here doing and why, why am I here and what are you all here for? So the Regional Commission will handle the drafting of this pre-disaster mitigation plan. It is a, um, large, large, large document. But, uh, it is going to contain a whole bunch of information about your priorities, what you want to do, and then probably twice that in appendices with data from storms, disasters, et cetera, things that have happened in the past. It's our job to prepare that and make sure that the document is good, ready to go, meets the standards that GMA and FEMA have set forth for you. Through the, uh, ITOS office at the Carl Vinson Institute, um, they will work with us, with Middle Georgia Regional Commission, on developing a HAZAS report, which is a advanced, um, GIS database, uh, analysis that looks at your critical infrastructure, your, uh, schools, government buildings, pump stations, water towers, sewer infrastructure, um, you know, hospitals, nursing homes, clinics, all sorts of things like that. And does an analysis that says, okay, based off of XYZ disaster, what is the anticipated impact across Jones County? What is that dollar amount going to be in damages if that were to happen, et cetera? Um, that goes into the report as an appendix to help with, uh, assessing what the vulnerability is for Jones County. And then we're going to have a stakeholder group because we can come up with ideas about what some of these things might be, but we really rely on Jones County, uh, and stakeholders throughout the community to help with, um, guiding us in that process, identifying what your greatest needs are in the community. We know from work with a bunch of, of communities and doing a bunch of these plans in the past what a lot of the challenges are likely to be. But we don't know the level of detail of, you know, that particular, uh, piece of infrastructure. That lift station, for example, is prone to always losing power if we get a strong windstorm and we really need a backup for it. That's not the level of knowledge that we have, but that's something where the county can help with identifying those challenges uh, and helping to put that in the plan. So the stakeholder group will meet regularly throughout the planning process to advise us on what needs to go into the document, give us information and help us, uh, you know, have, have a plan that reflects your needs. Uh, GMA is going to be our statewide partner on this process. They will review all the documents, they will provide feedback. They'll recommend that we make edits, adjustments, et cetera. We'll make those, we'll then send it to FEMA and they will give the final approval that the document is good to go. Um, we have a, uh, GMA project manager who will be working with us throughout that whole process. And then for both Jones County and the City of Gray at the end of the process, uh, it will fall to you to adopt the plan and have it then formally submitted to GMA and, and FEMA. and, and FEMA at that point, uh, which concludes the process. So, in general, the update process includes looking at the risk assessment, that'll be the topic of our first few meetings, uh, looking at goals and objectives, and then looking at what we want to do in terms of maintaining the plan, how we're going to keep it up to date, uh, and making sure that we document everything that's done, um, to make sure it meets federal standards, because that's a, a big part of this process. Um, and the basic process of doing a hazard mitigation is looking at, uh, identifying what those hazard is, uh, hazards are, creating a solid profile that, you know, outlines that this is the threat, uh, determine where there are vulnerable people, structures, uh, because again, our primary purpose of this plan is protect life and property. Um, specifically then, you know, are there extra vulnerable populations, such as the elderly, that we need to make sure that we're taking care of, uh, who may not have the means, uh, to, to take care of themselves, or who might be extra vulnerable in case of disaster? Uh, then beyond that, that helps to identify what the risk is, and then that gets us to that mitigation strategy, which is how we actually take care of it, so. Uh, now, the, the fun part is the dollars and cents. So, uh, the pre-disaster mitigation plan is funded by a federal grant, uh, so FEMA covers seventy-five percent of the eligible costs for this project, and there is a twenty-five percent local cost share required for this project. Um, so, how are we gonna get that? Well, the great thing is, we can do that as in-kind, and so, little do you know, the fact that you are simply sitting here, listening to me talk about this, means that you are saving Jones County taxpayers' money right now, uh, because you are meeting the in-kind contribution that Jones County has to do for this project. That's why I handed out that nice little sheet before that looks something like this, uh, which is a documentation of labor hours. So, we're going to be getting a whole lot of these during the process. Whenever we have a stakeholder meeting, whenever we have a public meeting, anybody who comes to any of those meetings counts. For most of you, especially as elected officials, you'll count as volunteers, um, because, you know, that, that elected official salary is not nearly as high as, uh, you, you might want it to be. Um, so, you count as volunteers. For local staff, they would, uh, get counted at their actual rate of compensation with pay and benefits, uh, in most cases, but, um, and you can just put volunteer if you are, uh, filling that out for us here today, um, with the spreadsheet that you've got on the, on the salary and benefits line. Um, and each of these meetings i- is pretty much going to default to an hour, um, as long as we take more than, you know, fifteen, twenty-ish minutes of talking, because it also includes your travel time to get here, um, and any time that you spent, uh, working and preparing for that, so you can put one hour as your time, um, because I'm also going to stand up here and filibuster long enough to make sure that we've talked the full length of time necessary to make it count as one hour, uh, in the federal government's definitions, so.
Is it just the commissioners that need to fill that out?
Commissioners, uh, county staff, uh, people contracted with the county, uh, can fill that out at, uh, at their hourly rate, um, so, you know, um, absolutely, that, that's, that's something that we can, that we can do and include with this.
How much are we worth an hour? I was just thinking if we could bump it up with, you know, what we think?
You know?
Ashley's gonna take it over the top.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to the General Assembly about that and, and see what they can maybe do to, to help lift that up there, but, uh, I, I don't know, if we, if we get too high, Debbie might get a little bit, uh, uh, squarely over there and about what she has to put in the newspaper, so. Uh, but anyway, we, we do appreciate your participation in this here today, but why I say that and why I, you know, joke about it a little bit in jest with y'all, is it does mean that as we have all of these stakeholder meetings throughout the planning process, your support as commissioners is going to be key in terms of encouraging the county employees, the county staff, to go to these meetings, to participate thoroughly and vigorously. Six thousand is a little bit higher than some communities have, um, which is good, because it, it's because you haven't had as many disasters, which is why your match percentage is a little bit higher. If you'd had more disasters, your match percentage would be lower, but we don't want disasters, so, you know, it's, it's a mixed bag, but, and again, for Jason as, as County Administrator, Karen as the EMA Director, support of all of the county staff in terms of getting people to come to meetings, share input, and provide that valuable expertise is going to be critical, because that's going to be how we save the county money, and that six thousand, we will hopefully meet with all in-kind contributions, and we won't have to worry anything about actually cutting a check to anybody, so. That, that's our plan. So, with that, uh, yeah, I just hit those highlights there, what's needed from y'all, participation in the planning process. As commissioners, you're certainly welcome and invited and encouraged to do so, but especially staff, and especially folks who have any sort of relevant knowledge about the workings of your infrastructure, roads, sewer, water, uh, anything that might be vulnerable in case of disaster, um, your volunteer firefighters are great folks to, to come to these meetings, um, and, and participate as volunteers, um, so we invite them all to come, and we'll be working closely with folks from the City of Gray as well to make sure that they send a good, uh, group of folks. We've got a list of, uh, stakeholders from a number of our regional organizations, the Health Department, um, for example, Family Connections, we make sure is, is on the stakeholder list, um, school system, so this, this is a county-community-wide effort, uh, in terms of participating in this plan. So, uh, with that, I have probably talked enough here at this point, uh, to pause and see if there are any questions from either you as the, uh, commission, or from any members of the public who are here, who are interested in commenting or asking questions about the plan, uh, while we wait for the, uh, the next step and then the conclusion of this hearing.
Any questions from the?
Can staff calculate overtime, or is it just regular time?
Uh, it would just be regular time plus, plus benefits, though, for staff, so, yeah. And if anybody, uh, uh, has come in, please do sign the sign-in sheet that we have up here on the front table, uh, so we can make sure that your, uh, presence at this meeting is accounted for and, and that we verify that you are here as a real person, because that's important, so.
We got a lot of them coming in, give you a few more minutes, we have the six o'clock crowd here.
All right, so where do we put, that we're volunteer?
Uh, on the hourly salary line, they're just put volunteer, uh, and we'll fill that in at the correct FEMA rate, which is thirty-something dollars an hour. It's a number that is a specific number that I don't have memorized off the top of my head right now.
Thirty-three, forty-three?
That sounds about right.
No questions for the audience?
The last note I'll make is that, uh, we have our next meeting, uh, which will be April third, uh, twenty twenty-five at one thirty PM, uh, that will be located, uh, here, I believe we said we were going to meet in this room for those meetings, um, and our, our plan is continue meeting on the first Thursdays of each month at this time, uh, as we go through the stakeholder planning process. It'll probably be five or six meetings that we need to do, um, but if we have really great participation and we're very efficient, then, then maybe not, maybe we can get it done in four meetings instead of five or six or seven, so, uh, we'll see, so.
We do appreciate you and Regional Commission for what, what all you do for us, and, uh, you do a great job, I'm very proud of you.
Well, tha- thank you, we, we appreciate working with Jones County as a community, because, uh, there, there are communities that make our lives easy in terms of always giving us good projects and good feedback and input, and y'all are one of those, so we're, we're appreciative to work with you on this project, uh, and that slide has all of the, uh, relative contacts, I've got a couple of my colleagues listed on here, uh, I, uh, I, I arm wrestled them to make sure that I could be the one to get to come here tonight and, uh, talk to y'all at the public hearing, uh, but you'll probably also see some of Aiden and/or Alex at, uh, some of these meetings along the way as well, too, so.
All right, anything else? Are we still on the clock?
No, my drive time just put us into overtime.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think...
That one's taken, yeah, 'cause here's a six-minute, mine's fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, but no, I, I think we're, we're good. It rounds to the close.
I make a motion to close.
Second, all favor I? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll take any of those forms.
We steal them all that way.
Oh, perfect.